Being that it is 10 o'clock, we are going to call our morning work session to order. First up, we have a department update by the Public Works Director, County Engineer Gordon Kelsey.
Morning.
Good morning.
All right, I have an item on your consent agenda, and this is to advertise for the construction of the parking lots around the courthouse, and so we can finish that project. So the engineer's estimate is somewhere between 600,000 and a million, and then we'll see how prices come in. Couple of payment pay estimates. The first one is all seasons heating, and that's for the courthouse roof HVACs for 129,067 dollars and 34 cents, with tax and retainage for a total amount of 139,256 dollars and 87 cents. And then Kirby Nagelhout has another pay estimate. I think we're about to the end of that, and it is a total of 173,643 dollars and 13 cents.
Okay, on the construction side, contract on the guide, the funding, federal signs and guideposts contracts is waiting for the signed materials to finish off the punch list. Roosevelt, we just need to finish that punch list. We still have to work through the damage or the failing asphalt. That'd be a longer process. Small works contract, we've executed the bonds and we're waiting, and contractor, we're waiting for a schedule from the contractor. Courtney Road, we're working on Max X, Hard Rock X, building embankments, and will also be HMA patching for the weekend. It, the road is, road wasn't built, the lower section of the road was not built for all those construction trucks. So it's starting to come apart a little bit. We don't want it during the Fourth of July weekend. I'm sure we'll get a lot of visitors on the lower section, so we're gonna patch that Thursday. The contractor's gonna patch that Thursday. As far as road does, our design, we'll be advertising for our concrete contractor to do click and tap path stuff. Our road crews will do the paving in August or September. Courthouse parking lots, we are, like we said, we're advertising this week. And our bridge projects, we'll hear back, we submitted for the grants, we should hear back in, around the fall, I think is when they award. And Rock Creek Bridge painter project, we're going through the paperwork with the feds to advert, to start design, so we can advertise in 2023, and that's a fully funded project. And that's what we have for design.
On the maintenance side, our Goldendale guys are up there at Sada's Pass punching in the road and access site to the radio tower where it will be. So that started, and they'll keep working on it this week, and I'm sure next week as well. And then they're also doing some grading, but we're kind of getting to the end of the grading season with the warm weather. There's really no moisture left. And so we'll see how it goes. We'll probably only respond to requests from the public and wait till next fall when we get some moisture again, unless we get rain during the summer, which sometimes happens here.
A question on that one?
Yeah.
Had a citizen complaint this weekend, Finnridge Road, you know, how it's got the, every time you wash boards up and wash boards down. And they were like, how come we can't pave those hills anyway? And I'm explaining a million dollars a mile. For a better judge, to me, if you were just gonna take one of those hills and pave those hills and not, you can't just have pavement gravel, pavement gravel, pavement gravel, correct? Is that not?
We've had roads, so at Cactus Heights, when I got here, there was, the people actually paid to have their, their section in front of their house done, and so it was a patchwork. And then we went back and finally did the whole road. So you can do that, but it, it's not advisable.
No.
Yeah, and then the, the cost is never in the paves, the hard surface, it's always the structure to support the hard surface. Yeah. Yeah, it's 85% of the cost. All right, the West Side crews are patching Easy Glenwood Highway, Glenwood area, Trout Lake Highway, and Trout Lake area this week. So that's what they're focused on. So we'll, we'll maybe take a look at the Pucker Huddle area. On the facility side, boy, we're just about wrapped up with most of the punch list items. We have the, actually the manufacturer of the band coil units that are noisy, they're gonna actually come out and, and look at the units. We have a few problems that they're not sure why they're responding or making the noise they are. And so the service, not the service rep, but the owner is gonna come out and take a look at our noisy locations before we actually do more work with them. So, and then the parking lots, just minor items left to go. The HVAC replacements, I think we're challenged with the Pioneer Center because last fall, at the end of the hot season, senior services unit, which is above health, the compressor basically failed in the, in the cooling unit, and so we freeze up and we flooded air and exam rooms and offices and stuff. And so we shut that off. So it does not provide cooling. So we had temporary units in there at the end of the season, and I don't know that it'll be adequate enough to get us through the summer. So we're gonna try a few things with more temporary equipment, the portable units, and see if that cools us down. We may have to look at something that sits outside a bigger portable unit that we can pipe in and duct in to get us through the summer. Because the equipment finally arrived, but our contractor, no one was expecting it until September, so they booked themselves with other work.
Yes.
And so we've asked that they, if they get a cancellation or an opening, that they come do our units. We have four units. The problem is, it's a puzzle to, that you have to unpack one unit at a time, because it's so packed in, in that attic. So if you remember, we cut holes in the roof and put in attic access, because there was no way to access the equipment up there. And so we've done that, but basically the units that there's, we chose the four, that they all have to come out, so you can get to each one. Otherwise, they're in the way, it's too packed. So, so they have to do all four, because we talked about, well, can they just do one?
They can't.
But they can't.
You know, because you have to disconnect them to get the far unit out. Problem is, is now you shut down four areas during the heat of the summer also. So, and you're a week, two weeks probably to get them all, get everything up and running again. So, you know, best case would be a week and a half probably, and so now you've got four areas without cooling, not just one. So that's why we try to get them replaced at the off-season, but we just didn't get in the parks.
Anyway, we're working on solutions to get us through until they can actually do it properly.
I remember being a kid and nothing had air conditioning around here, but, you know, now we're all spoiled.
Let's see, radio site, we showed you the picture of that and talked about the access up to Sada's, so I don't know that there's much more to say unless you.
Now, we're, we should finalize the plans before long and be looking to go out to add for the tower and everything. These are the pictures, which I'm sure you've already seen.
That's the end of our list, unless you, oh, you have other things.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a different thing, but yes, we have the RCO update.
That's the end of my list, so you want to do other questions and stuff before we get into this?
You gentlemen have any questions?
No.
Mr. Sorry?
No. I know what the gravel on the road was. Ah, it's the smallest gypsy lane. I was looking, the way it was, I thought, are they running utilities under the road?
Yeah, a new culvert?
Yeah. Grinding up the road.
All right.
Okay, we'll get started on RCO. And what is RCO? RCO is a granting agency put together by the state. They work directly for the governor. What they are is, is they're, they're actually, they have 20 grant programs. They facilitate basically divvying up grant dollars. That's what their only purpose is. They have different boards for different granting agencies, or different grants. For instance, like the FAR grant, I can speak to that. That has Fish and Wildlife, somebody from Fish and Wildlife, usually the director, the deputy director, somebody from DNR, and other pla, and other agencies. But what we'll do, I think, to make this a little more, is I'll quickly go through the different grants. All the grants are different, all 20 of them. Some of them we'll skip through pretty quick, because we don't qualify for them. Some of them we do, and it'll be a little more interesting. And each one of them has different timeframes. Main thing about RCO grants, though, to keep in mind is, all of them have the same, they're not the same date that they're, but they're done every two years, even years they're submitted. Jake is probably very familiar with them, because I worked with Jake previously on an RCO grant, or acquiring an RCO grant. And there's, they're quite a lengthy process, depending on which grant you go for. So I'll quickly go through the 20 of them. There's actually, there will soon be 21. And this is the question that I've looked for, for Dave, and that is, and I'll quickly update you on that now. And that is the new parks planning grant. They don't have one of those at this present time. They have a bunch of recreation grants, but no actual planning, just planning grants for parks. And I just heard back from them, they hope to be accepting, they hope to be getting out and accepting applications in August, but that's been pushed back. Doesn't surprise me. They're now gonna accept that, they're hoping for October, they accept applications in October, evaluate them in November, and award by the end of the year. They're still, I'm gonna email in so I can receive program updates. I really don't want to be part of the advisory committee. I could be, but then I can't apply for the grant, if that's what you want. I mean, I might be able to, because I would think I should, but I don't know how they'll play that, because Fish and Wildlife applies for grants, and they're actually on the boards of a lot of these granting agency, or grants. But anyway, we'll quickly go through some of the grants. Like I said, we just talked about the newest grant program. But first grant they have is the Aquatics Lands and Enhancement Account. This could actually be used along the Columbia River. This is used to provide access if we wanted to, county wanted to go out and put in a boat launch or provide access to the Columbia River. Only along the Columbia River could we do this. It has to be navigable waters, and that's the only navigable water we have in this, in this area. And then we get into the Bryan Abbott Fish and Barrier Removal Board. This is the grant I worked with you on. Jake, that we got, this grant actually paid for the complete design of Spring Creek. People have asked, why don't we go for a potential more of that grant for just, for construction? Problem is, is until that dam comes out, or there's a potential to get that dam out, we won't score high enough to do it. Very long, lengthy process to get that grant. And stop me if you want more information, I'm just, any of you want more information on any of these grant projects, I can give you more. Boating Facilities Program, this is the program that would be used if you wanted to do the boat launch in Lisle. This would be, it would be far better than the aquatic, the aquatic one is, it would, it'd be less competition. Because the aquatic one, they're really looking for oceans, but they will throw in navigable waters. This is the grant you would use for that. Problem is, and with a lot of these grants, is you have to have a comprehensive recreation plan in place. The agency needs to have that before you're eligible to apply. And these grants are paid for different avenues, how they get money. This one's actually paid for by gas tax on boats. So if you go to Marina and you buy gas, this is where that, that tax goes, is for this fund here.
It's actually more detailed than that. They actually send surveys to us to have us fill out on how many gallons we use, and then do the math that way, so even the gallons we buy here goes there.
Ah, didn't know that. And then we have the big, which is the large boating sites that, you know, we're not, that's 26-foot boats and larger, we really probably wouldn't have anything there. Community Forest Program, this is in case we were in, wanted to be in the timber industry. We would buy forest, you can also use it for developing recreation lands, trailheads, parks, campgrounds. You're gonna find a lot of these, they have a lot of these, a lot of these grants are very similar, and a lot of them are used for developing trailheads, and that, because it's RCO, and RCO stands for Recreation and Conservation, they're really looking for outdoor stuff. That's, they do very little indoor things. The next one is Puget Sound only, so we would not qualify for that. FAR, we've received a little over 800,000 on that grant over the years. Family Forest Practice, this would be a grant usually goes through the Conservation District, but could come through the county. And I don't know, Dave, this would be more, and I told Dave I'd throw him under the bus. This would be more for Dave McClure to kind of work, if we wanted to help out a smaller timber company, or private realistically. You can't harvest more than 2 million board feet to qualify for. Again, I'm telling Jake a lot of the stuff he probably already knows. The Land and Conservation Fund, this, this one is for populations of 50,000 and greater. This, we don't have. No Child Left Inside, this is actually, I gave Jeff a little hard time about this. This would be right up his alley. This is for giving classes for backpacking and that kind of thing, if you wanted to do something for youth. I mean, there's actually a youth one here, too, but this, well, it isn't just for kids, it's for everybody. And while it says 25% match, a lot of these vary. A Tier One match requirement, there is no match requirement for Tier One on this one. If Tier One is five to $25,000. So if you wanted to put together a camping trip for a group, you know, and you could do it under that, you could potentially get a grant for this. Again, I caution you, there's a lot of things that go into the, some of these grants. NOVA Education, NOVA stands for Non-Highway and Off-Vehicle Activities. So these basically, there's two categories. One's education, and one's actual trails. This is education and enforcement. If we had a trail system, we could get, we could actually pay, you could get a grant to pay for enforcement if you had a lot of littering and that kind of thing. But we don't have one. We wanted to start one, I guess, but, you know, we have a lot of other needs. Same with the, this is the actual trail, NOVA Trails is the same thing. Most of these are done in state and national forests and parks, and needless to say, DNR and Fish and Wildlife and state parks sit on the committee for this. Recreational Trails Program for Trailside Facilities, Trail Links to Recreational Trails. Again, if we wanted to have a trail system that connected to St. John Adams Trail System, the county wanted to own and manage one, this would be the grant you would look at. Salmon Recovery and Puget Sound, this would be more of another, I mean, the county could get involved in this. It's not something we typically do. It's replacing stream barriers, replanting stream banks, installing log jams. It'd be more of an Underwood Conservation District type of event. Then we get into the Washington Coast, and that one is actually only for coastal communities. We don't qualify. Farmland, if we decided to buy farmland, we could do this, and, or by rights to.
It's been used to buy up a significant portion of the Trout Lake Valleys.
Yeah, to prevent development, exactly. Forestland, it's the same thing, but it's forestland. I think that somehow worked itself into our Lakeside Project years ago. I think, if I remember correctly, I heard, I can't remember his name, anyway, that they had received some money.
Jay McLaughlin.
Jay McLaughlin, yes, to purchase that easement. Conservation, Habitat Conservation and Western Washington Recreation Program, this is for repairy protection, and this is leasing land. Again, this is more for creek enhancement. The Recreation Program, this is where you would put stuff if you were going to do work on parks, on the actual park.
Not for planning.
Not for planning, no, no, no. This is, this is to either buy land or actually do development in parks. You could do ballfields, waterfront parks, playground equip, all that kind of stuff.
Could you upgrade an existing park?
Yes, yes, you can upgrade an existing park. The funds come from state bonds. It depends on what you do, because it's a million dollars, 500, you can do up to a million if you're buying land, up to 500,000 if you're doing, if you're doing development on that. And the match is, the way the match is broken out, it varies depending on what you do. The problem with this, and with most of these, is, and I'll quickly go through this one, just because this one kind of interested me, you have to have, whatever agency's applying for it, whether it's county, city, whatever, has to have a comprehensive plan in place. That's part of the requirement. Yeah, and this is a two-year cycle. The application date was May 3rd. The comprehensive plan would have had to be in place May, March 1st, they have to receive that. And I can provide you with this, if you would like.
So the comprehensive plan would have had to be done by March 1st?
Yes.
So the fact that they're, say, doing it now, the city.
It would be good for the next term.
Have to wait two years?
Yes.
Interesting.
Yes, it would have to wait for two years. But again, there's, the match, like I said, does vary, and it just depends on what you're doing. It's different match for different things. And of course, you know, you gotta really, the state parks and also applies for some of this money. And then the last one we have is the youth athletic facilities. Now, I was thinking we, you know, this might work there, but they're very, you could do things in, and you could do things in the city or the county, but they're very adamant that this has to be competitive based. So basically, you can have, you could build a pool, but you have to have competitive swimming events. Only outdoors, you could build a track, or track and field events, that type of thing.
Like a baseball field.
Baseball fields would be perfect.
Because they're, the nature of baseball is, you're playing, it is a competitive sport.
Has to be athletic, and it has to be competitive.
Huh, wonder why they care.
I, I think because if not, then it would fall into the grant above. They, there's a little bit, you know, they have all these grants, and they have just kind of these minor distinctions between. But RCO is made up of, I don't know, I'm gonna guess 30 or 40 grant managers. And from there, each one is divvied up into, they have regions, and they have so many grant programs. Which is, is kind of nice, because you work individually with who you know. And I know, like I know the grant manager from the, for the salmon, for some of the salmon grants, and some of those type of grants are our region. But he doesn't do recreation, that's somebody else. He doesn't do boating. The boating guy used to be the FAR guy, but he retired, and I don't know who the new guy is, or the new person, I should say.
Yeah, because we've talked about doing the Lisle Boat Launch before with them.
Yes.
And, but we couldn't, because we didn't have a comprehensive plan that identified all of the.
All the recreational.
Yeah. And prioritize.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
That in itself might be something we want to put on our list, even though, you know, we're years away from being able to apply for one of those, but.
And you have to set yourself up.
Yeah, you gotta set yourself in place, and it, and it's a lengthy process, is.
And it's very, most of those grant programs are very competitive.
Yes.
I would hope there would be some consideration of regional equity, if we love to use that word now.
Yeah, that's their mission.
You know, to spread, and it's like, you haven't spent anything here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we have to.
We haven't asked, but once we get in a place where we can ask.
We have to sow our field and prepare our field to rain in order to receive the rain.
Yes, and some of this is where direct allocations goes through these kinds of stuff. Because this is the, the grant, they, this is who administers all kinds of stuff. So if you get something, which is how we started with the gun range years ago.
Yeah.
Was the 35 appropriation. Yeah, appropriation from Senator King, and then from there, we wrote grants for more money. Once you get your foot in the door, sometimes that's the way to help, to get going.
More funding.
But just like Dan said, you still have to have that foundation in place.
I say, I was unaware, like, yeah, I knew that, and we've been working on it over here, and I finally got them to do it, and we're halfway through the process. Your, your hole has to be done by March 1st, kind of made me cringe a little bit, but.
Every two years.
Every two years, and they do design projects, a lot of times, it's, you can do a two-step thing, you can do a design, and then, once you sell them on that, a lot of times you could, if it's a bigger project, if it's smaller, you're not gonna do design for playground equipment, it doesn't make any sense. But then you can sell them on something else. And again, their matches are kind of strange, because you can match grant, they'll allow you to match grant money with grant money. So there, there's a lot of.
And I would imagine if we do planning grant for the Goldendale thing and the Dallasport thing, we don't have to have this comprehensive plan to do the planning grant, but by the time we apply for the real thing, we need, so.
You would submit. And that's the same thing with Dallasport. If you did that, then you could apply, there's a few different avenues you could apply for here for Dallasport, I think. You could do recreation, you could do, if you wanted to do ballfields, you could do youth athletics. There, there's some other options, but you want to find the best one, then it gives you the best opportunity.
That was really informative. I knew there was some, I didn't realize there was, it was this long.
It just keeps growing.
I know, 20, now 21.
Well, I knew there was that many, I just didn't know the stipulations behind.
Yeah.
Because I've already looked at it and been interested in, so.
Any questions?
Have we ever had a comprehensive park plan? I mean, granted, if we did, it's way outdated.
I don't think so. I talked to Moji, because we looked at doing it for the, but we have never had one, no. Because I think they want you to form like a recreation board. I mean, that's, I think that's typical, it's not my expertise, but I think that's typical of, you have a like, like White, White Salmon has. You know, for their pool, they could apply for some of these if they, if White Salmon themselves had a comprehensive plan, because pools do qualify for a few of these grants. I didn't actually list them out.
Could White Salmon apply if they had a comprehensive plan, but the pool locations outside the city limits?
I don't know, that I'd have to check into. I, that I'm not sure of. And it's pretty easy, we can call up whoever would do that and find out extra questions. But again, I, this is just one packet for one grant, and this is like a tenth of the size. They're actually, there's a book for each grant.
Oh, yeah.
That's just, again, like I said, Mr. Anderson, very aware of what they're all entail.
I used to serve on one of those.
If we did a, in, which I'm sure we will as we move forward, but come up with a comprehensive parks plan, who would be our lead? who would be our lead or our director or whoever in charge? Would that be in the, in the Moche realm or would that be in the public works realm? I would imagine we would have to set up a citizen advisory board and they would be serving on the thing and.
Remember that long-range planner job that we have posted?
Yeah, no, I'm not waiting for that, sorry.
Yeah, I would say typically it would be in the planning. I mean, because.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I guess you could assign somebody.
The issue's going to be is.
Workler, yeah, you want that.
Workler, adding this on top of everything else.
We typically do that if you're not in the room.
Yeah.
Who's not here? Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Doesn't look like Mr. McClure is here yet. Mr. King, is there anything you have that you'd like to discuss? You want to come forward, Jeff?
Yeah, just for information, we have had our first two, I would say bona fide wildfires. One is going on right now out in the Centerville Valley, east of Harms Road, grass fire. Not likely to impact any homes at this time. And yesterday, we had a fire just off of Main Street in Wishram, on the backside of those houses, on the north side of Main Street, along that hillside and some of the scrub, that immediately threatened several houses, and requests for mutual aid were sent out immediately. So, but they got those under control and contained before it did impact any buildings, as far as I know, when I left last night. It has begun. And I think I'm back here next Tuesday, but new information that I got just yesterday confirmed. Got more microwave radio equipment. Surplus from Yakima Fire District Five, which is going to bolster our ability to carry that microwave radio system farther into the future. I reported to you earlier that we were extending the replacement schedule for that. This will give us the ability to do that and do it more comfortably.
How much longer do you think it'll give us?
Yeah, it really depends on when we see that first piece of equipment fail.
Right.
At that point, we can say, because, you know, the manufacturers are, you know, end of life, but that's their definition. Ours is, when does that equipment really start to need major repairs or fail completely? And now we have a significant number of spares of everything. Just what we're receiving new, I should say, in this procurement of surplus equipment is enough to build four complete microwave paths between sites and the prime site, minus the antenna systems. So that's a significant amount to keep us in replacement parks.
Indefinitely, really.
And keep finding more?
Yes, sir.
And then that is at no cost.
Great. That's amazing. Thank you, Director King. Okay, we are running a little ahead of schedule, but since he is here, the one and only, Director McClure, if you're done with vacation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Richard hurt his back this morning. He's going to try to join us remotely, but he's having trouble walking. So I just shot him a text and hope he, hopefully he's getting on. We're waiting on that. Maybe Whitney can jump in and provide you a natural resource update.
Good morning, commissioners. We'll start off with our lead entity salmon recovery process. This is actually one of the RCO grants that you were just talking about. So we have almost concluded our 2022 grant round. Our Citizens Review Committee ranked projects earlier this month. They recommended funding both of the two projects that were submitted this year, which is the first page that I handed you, that summary. So we have the White Creek Wood Enrichment Phase Two Project by Yakima Nation Fisheries. This is on the closed portion of the Yakima Reservation. They'll be adding four hundred pieces of large wood to improve habitat complexity in the channel. The second project is the Upper Rattlesnake Creek Conservation Project by Columbia Land Trust. This is on Rattlesnake Creek in the White Salmon drainage, and it will acquire and conserve 1.68 miles of Rattlesnake Creek. This project was partially funded last year and returned this year to receive the remnant funding that they need to implement the project. So in total this year, our committee has recommended funding both projects for a total of $970,367. And, sorry, go ahead.
As far as on the Rattlesnake Creek one, how, what is the mix of acquisition versus conservation easement? Or is it all acquisition?
It's all acquisition, so they're purchasing it from the conservation fund who bought it from SDS.
Okay, that was my next question. I suspect, knowing the region, what land we're talking about.
Yep.
Okay.
And since we had last spoken, we have received additional funding from the legislature and then from Surf Board to implement these salmon recovery projects. So in addition to fully funding both these projects next year, or this year, we'll have $489,112 to roll over into our grant program for next year. So we had, we're flush with cash this year and looking for places to spend it. But that's good because as you'll see on the other sheet that I provided you, that's our planned project forecast list. We have to submit this to the Recreation and Conservation Office every two years. That totals the potential projects that could come forward within the next two grant cycles. And so in total, we have, you know, upwards of seven, potentially seven million dollars worth of projects next year, and then five million dollars worth of projects the following year. So we certainly don't lack for projects that could use this extra funding, and we're hopeful to be able to apply it next year. Any questions on the grant round funding or other, or the potential projects for the future? The county's Lower Spring Creek Road project is on this list.
Yep, I just saw it on 2024.
So the landowner who owns the dam upstream changed hands last summer, so it's just delayed the dam removal portion a little bit as the, as the partners work to build that landowner relationship.
Do they have a good relationship with the new owners?
They've established contact. I think the people were, you know, moving in, settling in. They moved in last summer, so we're hopeful. We haven't heard any no's at this point, so. I mean, that dam is, is not doing great. It needs to come out. It's leaking.
Oh, it is now?
Yeah, so, yeah, it needs to come out eventually, preferably sooner rather than later. And then in other lead entity updates, we just finished an open recruitment period for two environmental seats on the Citizens Review Committee. In total, we've had four applicants, and so we'll be reviewing those applications shortly and discussing that with the board at a later date. Any questions on the lead entity process?
Doesn't look like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other updates are, we have begun reviewing the Gorge Commission Climate Change Action Plan, and we'll be preparing comments from a natural resource perspective. If the board wants to integrate those comments into your own, let us know. Luckily, they extended the deadline to August ninth, so it gives us a bit more time to read and digest what the implications may be.
When are you hoping to have those?
I have a draft mostly done, so fairly soon, within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, if you'd like to look at them. And then additionally, I'll begin reviewing the, oh, I meant Pump Storage EIS. I had Swizzler written in my notes, but we're developing the Swizzler EIS. So I'll be reviewing the pump storage environment, the EIS as well, and I know Dave is too.
Yeah, I've been doing a lot of reading lately. It's almost a thousand pages. So they had a online public hearing last Thursday. I believe there were something in order of fourteen attendees, and no one testified at the hearing. Everyone much like me, just listening.
Listening.
That's right. And there's a hearing this evening. I really don't plan to comment unless something comes up that.
It's just so egregious.
Exhess, I should, because it, you know, there's, there's a lot of detail in that EIS, draft EIS, and, and I'm still reviewing it. We've, they've extended the comment period from, I think it was July 25th or 28th to August 9th. Thank goodness, so there's a, there's a lot to, a lot to review there, but I.
Do you have, I guess I'd say, any kind of interpretation of that draft EIS? I, is it, is it better than you hoped, worse than you hoped? Do you have that opinion? I looked at it and said, oh, well, this isn't horrible. I was expecting way worse.
I didn't, I didn't expect anything big on the environmental impacts. You know, I thought that it would likely come in with whatever impacts it has can be mitigated. I mean, we're talking about a couple of ponds and most of the projects underground, so. I mean, that, that's not surprising. I was glad to see that the Department of Ecology recognized that, you know, the water, it's, it's a service connection to the PUD. A lot of people have misunderstood it to think that the pump storage project was going to get a water right and, and create new diversions from the Columbia River, which is not the case. It's what's now a municipal right, and it's like got a priority date of somewhere nineteen sixty-eight or sixty-nine. So there are a lot of junior water right holders. So if there's need to mitigate or need to reduce increased flows in the Columbia River, that would fall first to the junior water right holders in the way of the states, so.
Yeah, if we're into sixty-eight, sixty-nine priority date, we're, we got some serious problems.
Yeah.
As far as if we've made our way down the list to get to that.
Right. Yes. Given that, what, it was nineteen eighty, the state promulgated the in-stream flow rule for the Columbia River. It was based on a flow recurrence level of about every twenty years. And since nineteen eighty, it's, those interruptibles, there's been a call for water one time.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's going to be reaching back.
A long ways.
Yeah, but, but there's a hearing, in-person hearing this evening at the Grange, and I do plan to attend that. But again, unless something comes up, I'm probably just sitting there and listen. We've been working on the Swizzler Draft EIS. And we are going to have a meeting with the landowners. There are three landowners whose property touches on the project footprint, so July fourteenth. And we will meet with them separately, we being the Department of Ecology, Clickitat County, Benton County, the SEPA co-leads, and our consultant. There'll be an opportunity if the board would like to go individually, so we don't have a quorum problem. Again, there are three landowners, so we expect to have three conversations there to address their questions, so you're welcome.
When is that?
July fourteenth? I'm just curious. And we're still working, we'll have similar meetings, hopefully with the tribal, interested tribes. So that would be the Yakimas, Worm Springs, Yumatillas, and I believe the Ness Pierce. So we got targeted with that, and we started sending information to them. Let's see, what else? I guess sort of segueing between natural resources and economic development, had a meeting last Friday, a remote meeting with the Department of Ecology and City of Goldendale. As you remember from the REDS process, the city has an aquifer storage and recovery project that they want to get done. I thought it was a very positive meeting. Ecology is planning on asking for a bucket of money for aquifer storage and recovery around the state, several projects. And I believe we got the city's project in, in, in that consideration. So we've got some questions to address from Ecology, but it looks good.
We're just, from a little historical perspective, the White Salmon Aquifer Storage and Recovery.
It moves forward. Jake.
I mean, is it, is it actually operating? Are we, are they, are they storing water or are they still in the test phase?
They need to do some upgrades to their system so that they can push water because they, the, the well that actually they're doing the aquifer storage and recovery on is actually an artesian well, so in order to get water down there, you have to push it.
Push it down there.
Push it down. And so they, they're working on some, and it's a pain to flip all the levers to get it to go the opposite way, but they're, they're still working on it.
Okay. I just had not, I, it occurred to me, you know, that was something we really advocated for and sold. And it's like, yeah, I don't recall the ribbon cutting, you know, here's some cake. Array, it worked.
That's a long process.
It's been, I mean, that's, I think it's been a decade at least. Okay, cool. Well, I'm glad it's still moving along.
Yeah, these water storage projects, while we've been working on Swizzler for twelve years, actually longer than that, probably more like fifteen, we're back to scoping to different potential sites and that sort of thing. On what? Any more natural resource questions?
And I don't want to get the cart before the horse, but any thought, because I know you're preparing comments on the pump storage draft EIS. And I didn't, you know, I read some of the executive summaries and some of the more in-depth, the one, you know, the, the one comments on the cultural resources as far as impacts is, to me, is critical. The, I'm, I'm not sure what we're going to, hopefully we're going to offer some perspective that's different than, because I did not agree completely or much with their, the draft assessments as far as on that. Not that I'm arguing about that there's cultural, you know, yes, but again, the, what, some of the things that are being cited are irrelevant because they're, they're rights that don't exist, as far as I'm concerned. As far as that's, it's private land, it is not, that is not, that is in no way to disrespect the tribe's concerns over cultural resources. I, I respect that, but I also, you're citing impacts to resources that you don't actually have, from my perspective. And so it's pretty, you know, how do you mitigate for something that you don't actually have? You can't, so.
The county.
That's why I will not be attending tonight.
You know, the county and Bonneville Power Administration did a joint NEPA/SEPA review for, for pro, for two wind projects back in the mid nineties. And it recognized that, you know, on those private lands, there was not access at that time. So what changed? You know, so, you know, the impact from the project, they didn't have access before. And if they don't have access later, there's nothing that's changed because of the project. So that was, there was a, a condition that the project app would make a good faith effort to acquire easements, but those two projects never got built. They went into appeals. One of the companies went bankrupt, is my understanding. They went into appeals. One of the companies went bankrupt, is my understanding. The others had issues with the technology, so the projects never moved forward.
Right. So any good faith obligation expired with the projects?
The EIS assumes that those wind projects that are up there now are the same projects, and they're not, not the same projects, not the same owners, not the same permits. So there's, there's some things in it I see that need to get clarified.
Right.
So there'll be commenting.
And I'm with Dave, you know, you can't, you can't say, hey, you can't do this because I no longer have rights to do this and this and this on the land when you, you don't have rights today to do that on the land. So I, I think that needs to be a, even though it will make waves, I think the county needs to respond with that argument because it's a true and fair argument.
Yeah. So.
And it's not that the landowner would not be willing to provide access.
Right. I mean, I think that is, I think there's could be, and, and that's between the, the property owner, you know, the project and, you know, to find, you know, because it's, I feel the same way. You know, I'm a private landowner and I have, if, if I, you know, I own land in, as we all do, many of us, in ceded territory that I, but, and if there is a resource that it's, again, I have private land. I don't actually, I'm not required, but if there are tribal members that have traditional uses or would like to re, and they came and talked to me, I would have no issue with that at all. But that's a discussion between, between us, not, but I wouldn't have something, like if I was proposing to do something, to say, oh, you can't do that because it's going to impact my ability to do. It's like you don't have that ability now, and so why am I, I can't do this because it's going to impact a right you don't actually have right now. And I feel the same way about this. Most of that, that I, you know, again, that's not that, you know, gathering and the different, those are very important cultural things, and they should be protected in those, in areas where those, those rights exist today. They have to be. And there is an opportunity for enhancement of existing rights. I think there's, I think they're missing an opportunity, but because I was particularly disturbed that the alternative is, well, the real only practical alternative is, don't build it. That's.
Which doesn't change the right.
Doesn't change the right. If the project doesn't get built, guess what? You still don't have any rights. So I don't, I don't understand. It's other than that the real thing, and that's again, why I'm not going tonight, is that I don't want to see it built.
And I, and I just caveat that I, you know, vet my understanding. So what, what I just said, we'll just call it preliminary if I could. Uh, let's see. In the economic development, Senator Cemetery District Number One is requesting some funding. They're looking, is Richard on the line?
Uh, yes, I am. Yes, I am.
All right. Well, we can hear you. Maybe I could turn, you want to talk to the Cemetery District very quickly? I'll run through some topics here, tee them up.
Uh, yes. So the Cemetery District, we, we are revisiting their application. They just sent it to me just, uh, late last week. And so originally, they, we, we have a small misunderstanding. They thought that they had to perform the work for the tree trimming and then ask reimbursement as opposed to the other way around. So they originally wanted their tree trimming for July sixth and seventh, requesting reimbursement through the Community Development Project Fund of twenty-two thousand dollars. They've got five hundred and thirty thou, five hundred and thirty dollars matching. And currently, they don't have a grant rider, and they're not really able to search for outside grants outside of that. And so that's what they're requesting. So we're going to revisit that and, and see if we can maybe delay the tree trimming service to, to put in the application through the, you know, the, the proper process. And so that's where we're at with that. So, but we are working with them. I had originally sent them the application a couple of times, once back in February, and then again in April. And so they're, they're just moving through. They did talk about it, the tree trimming service and the application during their last meeting, but they're, they're still moving forward with that, so.
And they are tracking that they need to get the okay slash contract from the county prior to doing this work. Okay. All right. Richard, how about, how about the airport grant, the EDA grant? Where are we at there?
Uh, yes. So the EDA grant, the cultural resources, from, from what I'm tracking, should be done middle of July. It shouldn't cost more than fifty-eight hundred dollars out of our budget for that. And speaking with the federal EDA, well, I guess, I guess one, one caveat for the cultural resources, the, the whole NEPA process, is the FAA is going to be categorizing it as a CADEX. But they're going to be basically taking the lead on it, more or less, because it is airport property. So there's some coordination that was going on between who's going to be going through that process, whether it's going to be the federal EDA or the FAA. Some promising things coming out of this. And I had already mentioned this previously in, in regards to us not having to go back to the Investment Review Committee, but in addition to that, they've already started sending me some different line items on what they're going to start including into our award letter in regards to the award conditions. So this is, this is good. All we got to do is, uh, once this cultural resources survey is completed, I suspect we'll get the award letter sometime this fall.
That's great news. Yeah. It's assuming there's no hits on cultural resources.
Right.
All right. Yes, a Richard's working with a business, Richard, you want to touch on the business recruitment opportunity with Goldendale, just quickly?
Uh, yeah. So I've already been speaking with the new city administrator, Pat, and Mayor Mike in regards to business recruitment opportunity. This is through another gentleman we have here in town. There's a fabrication company out of Seattle that we're looking at. And currently, we're looking at what that might look like in regards to incorporating that within an incubator space at the Goldendale Industrial Park, and what that might look like. And so we're, we're just beginning that process. And, and Dave, as long as I don't break up, do you mind if I just go ahead and continue on?
Sure, just jump in.
Okay. Another one that we've been assisting with is a business retention or a business expansion opportunity with a beverage company down there in, in Bingen. We just started that as well just about a week and a half ago. Also, in regards to workforce development, we have an aerospace company that we've assisted with. We put in the application for them, or we, we, we put it together, we submitted it. Everything is good with it with Clark College, and that's going to be training up fifteen incumbent workers, but those incumbent workers were just hired within the last six months with an anticipated hiring of another ten within, within the next six. Been in contact with that company this morning. Out of that ten that we put in the, in the package, they've already hired seven of those ten. So we're looking to engage on this training. So that's going to be for workforce development. In regards to the Clickitat mill site, I made another, I, I went out there to Clickitat and contacted with the, with some folks from the Clickitat Community Center again. They're, they're tracking on everything as far as how we're moving forward. I think I have a pathway in, in how we can move forward without going underneath public works as, as far as when it comes to RFPs and stuff. So we're, we're going to be moving forward with that. In regards to childcare, we had the childcare workforce session, or the, the session with you guys. I believe last week, we're going to continue assisting Log App where we can with that, with the funding that they have, as well as our, our couple of hopefully promising applicants in, in that regard. And then on top of that, we have the, our, our ADO annual update. So our ADO annual update, it's basically everything that we've done throughout the year. We're updating that with the Department of Commerce. One thing to note is we had already gotten a, an increase in ADO funding from last year. And this year, we, uh, who we belong with, the Washington Economic Development, folks, they're going to be, they're going to be putting in a request to the legislature to increase that funding once again. So we'll keep you guys up to date on that. And is there anything else I'm missing, Dave?
Yep, that's got it. Yeah, we're looking, I attended a legislative workshop with the association here. I think we're getting about eight million statewide for an associate development organization. And they're looking to increase that ask to like fifteen. So that could be a significant increase. But the increase that was done this year from fif, for us, fifty to seventy-five, that was just raising the floor of the lowest in terms of funding. Because we're a small county, we, we get the base level of funding. The larger counties such as King County, they didn't change their cap. It's a population-based formula, and I think their cap get like three hundred thousand a year. There, I think we're, they're going to be talking about increasing the caps for some of the larger counties in, in addition to raising the floor. Yeah, it's, it's a pretty good time for the associate development organizations in terms of funding requests. Funding was cut back on the ADOs with the two thousand eight recession. What the seventy-five, increase to seventy-five thousand did was get us back to where we were funded prior to the last recession. And I think the legislators seen, uh, had an opportunity to see the ADOs working during the COVID and working with all the small businesses. So, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of attention to us now, and I think we've got a reasonable chance. It looks like Commerce might support that ask. And so I think that's about it. Unless you've got questions.
Any questions?
Um, just, I guess I'd say more of a public board clarification on where we go in the future, on how many employees are in your department, and O-nine dollar potential uses for another employee. And that whole thing, it is my understanding that the case PETA board authorized O-nine funding for another employee a few years back. It just never got done. So my inkling would be, let's see, about doing. But we now have a full board before us, and I would be curious to see what their opinion is of that. Because I, I look at it as, you know, for, for one employee in, Richard, the amount of work that he gets done far outweighs what his paycheck is. He brings far more value to the county than, than what we pay him. And he spends so much time in all these meetings, how much more economic development could he bring to the county if he wasn't in all the meetings? So I, I believe that it'd have good interest to the county to add an economic development employee in there.
With the, I'm sorry, may I remember when we did the economic development strategic plan? That was a big thing, was to increase.
Increase capacity.
Yeah. The capacity increase. We did put some budget in to do that. That would include, that was also the time when, when the feds were looking at changing the compensation criteria for exempt, non-exempt. So there was some of that adjustment into it. And so we're looking at, Richard's position may be increasing that to a deputy director level and increasing staffing by, by one. As we look back at the history of the department, we were two full-time equivalents in two thousand eight and two thousand and eleven. We went to one point five in terms of operational staff as opposed to administrative staff. Last year, the way that we've been doing it on the point O-nine funding, we've been getting twenty percent of the revenue for staffing. This last year, well, yeah, this last year, we did not spend all of that. So what comes to my department can, for staffing, can only be spent on staff salary and benefits. We had a balance left over of thirty, something thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand. Let me double check. I did, no, make that thirty-eight thousand. We didn't spend. So for this year's budget, I've just reduced the ask to, as to what I'd have transferred because that would make it easy, easier for us to track and make sure those dollars are spent on staff instead of building up a fund balance that we'd have to track and have.
Of restricted dollars.
Of restricted dollars.
And I guess my, my point is not that, you know, a warehouse in Dallas Port is a bad thing for eight hundred grand. I'm not saying it is by any means at all. I'm just saying that if you can do that and bring in three jobs, or you can hire a staff person with the O-nine dollars for eight years, that eight years is going to bring in far more than three jobs.
Um, as I said, I supported the, because it was in the strategic plan when you're looking at it, and I was, I was a yes vote on that then. I see the, I see the benefits of it. I also, it's always finding that balance, but I'm a, I, I mean, I like bricks and mortar. I mean, I like to have tangible things also, but I think we can have both. And I think that there's, I think there is, um, there's a benefit to it. And I think you can, you can say that it's a, it's as worthy of an investment, because that's really what it is. It's an investment in staff to get those other, and it seems like the workload, the complexity of stuff going on in economic development right now, and in, at least in this county, is such that there could be some, another hand on deck would not be a bad thing. Especially when we, you know, we're already comfortable with what we were diverting as far as as a percentage, and it's, it's too much for the existing staff. So we wouldn't even be looking, I was trying to recall if it was twenty percent or twenty-five percent.
It was, it was twenty, we had a meeting a year or a couple of years ago. They being the EDA board members. It was suggested by not one of the county commissioners, but by the, another board member that we, we take more to, to make sure we got the staff, and I told them to hold off on that.
Right.
And there's a, there's a fiscal budget and there's a headcount budget the way I look at.
Right.
Staff, you build a, you know, I try to keep.
So what I mean, I guess my point would be, now, obviously, we can't hire another staffer for thirty-eight thousand dollars, but it's also not of, it's, we're already, we were already partially funding another staff with the existing diversion that we were doing. But it's not, it's not a heavy as of lift as far, so maybe instead of twenty, maybe it is twenty-five, or it's, you know, it's, again, I mean, it is hard, and I'll admit that. It's like I'm from the old school where we preserve those dollars just for bricks and mortar, and we fully funded the staff out of our own resources and we, which nobody else does. I mean, and we've, over time, we've had to become more like other, and I, again, I think that's, I think that's a good balance. I think we can, I think we can do both.
We took the, none of the point O-nine funding for staff prior to twenty seventeen or eighteen.
Yeah. Yeah.
So why were you not able to spend the thirty-eight thousand? Were you not able to spend enough of your time on using that, or?
I only have so many hours I can bill.
So he built everything that he could towards it, and that's.
You know, it just depends. I, I have, if I'm billing against grants, I'm tracking real time, so.
Right.
The grant covered everything up.
You know, it just depends on the mix of my time. I asked, my budgets are estimates of where I'll be and what staff will be billing against, so.
Well, I'm, I'm a little worried about adding staff, knowing that the thirty-eight thousand is not going to cover it, and we'd be having to cover the rest, and I'm far.
No, we could change the allocation. Like, we can pay, it's, yeah, so now at twenty percent, eighty percent of the O-nine dollars are going, are sitting in the fund that we use for infrastructure projects. So we would reduce what was available. Yeah, it would be no more of our, of our county, county dollars. It would be.
But that employee would also, it might, it might give you a little less for when you're building that warehouse. But that employee would be a benefit to the, the already existing businesses or potential new businesses, not only here, but like the brewery that he's talking about over there, you would be able to help and expand existing businesses. You would have a little less for building a new brick and mortar of your own.
Which you could argue will generate more, more economic activity, which will generate more sales tax, which generates more revenue.
That's, that's my, my argument. And this is not, hiring this employee would not necessarily, it's not like it's coming out of our budget. Uh, we're gonna use landfill funds for it. Anything else, this is already oh nine funds that are going into an account to either buy an employee or brick and mortar. And we're just asking Case PETA to give us a few more percentage so that we can get.
Few, fewer bricks.
Didn't, didn't we pick up the, uh, small business development? And that we kind of figured that, that held this place for us? Because it's kind of like, we got another employee, that's just, they're not.
When I said that under twenty thousand last year, that included the forty thousand. So we can't, we can't fund the, uh, SBDC directly out of that because they have to be county staff or an economic development organization staff. So I use county dollars to fund this, the SBDC, and I include so, you know, it, it increased the amount of money I had to, had to cover with.
Right, but that's, that's, I guess I would say the perfect example of money well spent. Because when you do the update and see that it brought in one point two million or whatever the update was last week for us spending forty thousand, that's a good return of investment, uh, in my opinion.
I've been very pleased with the way that SBDC has been working for us.
And I would, I would look at it that if we needed to ask Case PETA for another five percent, to bump it up to whatever, twenty-five or whatever, to get enough for a full-time employee, I, I would be willing to wager that they're, they're game. I'm game. Sounds like Dave's game.
Let me run some, some numbers and, and get it back here.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
All right, any other questions from the board?
All I got.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Richard. Feel better.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Do we have anything else, uh, we need to discuss this morning?
Um, I guess we could, uh, bring you kind of into the loop. I talked to David about it last week. One thing that I'd be curious in, not that I'm on the record, not that I'm looking to spend these dollars today. I just want a more educated decision, uh, going forward. I would like to, um, have our SBDC, uh, person look at the childcare thing again, uh, but from a different perspective. As essentially, let's say, taking the Public Works Building, splitting it in half, using half for mental health and half for county employee childcare. So heck of a lot less kids, half a building, um, and what it would cost us. Because, because I do believe that there is potential in the future that we have a much bigger problem than we do today. Because I don't picture the state's gonna fix this problem. Um, I also fully understand there's no money in our budget to do this situation. Uh, but I think if we kind of had a quick look on what that subsidy would be, we would have a better knowledge going forward if we found ourselves, um, with a few more dollars after a pump storage or something like that, that we can at least know whether that's something that might be future planning or if something that that's completely off the table. So just kind of a look at what's the cheapest we could provide, and if that's no infants, that's no infants. The biggest percentage of student-to-teacher base to give us at least something because that is an issue when we look at new hires. So I would be curious what that subsidy would be. Again, we're not doing it. But, um, at least have the knowledge. So, um, but if you're adamantly opposed, then, you know, it's just a knowledge thing.
Do we, do you see any issues on housing, childcare and mental health in the same building?
Potentially.
Okay. Maybe that was just the first flag that popped up in my head.
Yeah, potentially. I'm sure you'd have to divide them and access on both sides and one, this side doesn't have access to that side. And, uh, the playground is gonna have to be fenced off into the childcare itself anyway. And, um, but, you know, if, if reality, if you're doing mental health, you're really looking at two years down the road anyway. By the time you get it set up, potentially. Um, if you're doing childcare, it could be four years down the road. Um, and maybe it's that building, maybe it's a different building, but I guess I know the data that I was presented a week ago is definitely a no-go. Um, so I, I don't think that gets us out of the problem of childcare of our own employees. Uh, so I was looking at more information on that front, and then I wanted to bring up the discussion with you guys of potentially looking at, uh, allowing, uh, directors to, if they wanted to do four-way work or four-day work weeks, uh, and offer a work from home, um, which should help alleviate at least one day's worth of childcare and also would help alleviate, um, some of the inflation we're dealing with today because then employees can at least save twenty bucks in gas from not driving to work on one day. So that's a conversation I think we should have too.
Yeah, I, I would say for me, I'm, I'm definitely interested in exploring, because I think not just the childcare thing. I mean, but the whole thing as far as work schedules and, because I think, I think this inflation, I mean, all that's gonna do is it's gonna put pressure on us as far as our wages. And if there's, if there's a way that we can still get the work done with people, you know, working remotely. It's not like we don't know how to do it. Part of the time, I'm very sensitive to, because I'm still, there's state agencies still, but there's no humans in offices. And I don't wanna see that is that, you know, that's fine as a, as a percentage of the time, but the bulk of your time, we need people. Because, you know, when I'm a citizen and come in and for services, I expect a human, not a, you know, here to call this number or do that. And that's, and it's gonna be different department by, because some things are, it's easier for remote.
Given by us. So it's kind of the same idea. We have to staff if one of them is Monday through Thursday, the other one's Tuesday through Friday. The office is always manned.
Is always manned and personed, or whatever the correct term is now. Yeah, I'm curious. I had went to, um, the McHead, um, board meeting, the full board last, I think it was Thursday evening, it was over in Hood River, in person, and some folks. Skamania County has, because I was lamenting, because I was still stinging from the, the report we got and the, it's like this is an unfixable problem as far as, and I was talking, I was actually singing, um, our SBDC praises. And was talking about that. Well, Skamania, they have a similar, where they have a daycare in the, up at the old Forest Service. There's stuff they have at Stabler, where they converted a, it sounded really similar. And I'm like, well, how is that? And it, and it's working. And so I'm like, how I, and the folks from, because the, the folks from Wasco County and the hospital, the folks on there, you know, they had done basically the same work that we did, came up to with the same results almost to the, to the, you know, to the dollar as far as how, it's like, because we all admitted, it's like, yeah, the economics, this, it just doesn't work without a subsidy. And, uh, and that's when Skamania County, oh, well, we have this and, you know, we're, it's like, we all wanna know, how are you doing it and complying with the rules and doing, because they, they're, there's, they claim, Bob Hamlin, Commissioner Hamlin, said that there are folks coming, that are bringing their kids from Hood River and driving them to Stabler and dropping them off at this daycare. And so I'm really intrigued about what, and they kept saying, oh, well, it's, because, um, the city clerk in Stevenson, I think has some direct knowledge, either uses it or knows somebody that does. And she goes, and she'd said, oh, it's a, it's a program where the kids are outside. It doesn't matter what the weather is for, you know, a, a part of the day. And it's like, that's, I'm not sure how that's relevant to the economic model. Unless it's go out, I had joked about, like, the way I was, outside you go, you know, you'll be fine, stay inside the fenced area. You know, that's the way we were raised, but there were, except there were no fences. But, uh, so I'm really curious what, what they found. And, and we, I wasn't the only one. Everybody in the room was really interested. And so, um, I was gonna suggest to, um, maybe have Lorraine, and may, maybe she did interview, maybe she did as far as just to look at, is it something specific about the way, you know, the scale, the size, where they've sized, or maybe they don't have infants, maybe they don't, I don't know. But they also don't have, it's not the facility, I think they get, the county gets a, you know, they rent the facility to the, it's a nonprofit. But they get some kind of return on the, um, on the, on the building, where they don't just donate it.
So is this then something that maybe we should, uh, schedule Lorraine back in for twenty minutes one of these weeks?
Well, I was wondering, I was gonna try to talk to her to see if you go, yeah, yeah.
Rather have all those things.
Oh, no, I would rather have it all, right.
Out there, that way we're all in the loop.
Yeah.
Uh, on every issue and, and we can kind of.
I'm just highly skeptical that it's, that it's some sort of subsidy.
I mean, when we started, the previous board started this childcare discussion years ago, it was the thought, thinking that, okay, the county was gonna have to subsidize for its employees and, and the hospital would subsidize for its employees and PUD would subsidize for its. And, and then they kind of backed out and said, no, the county needs to subsidize everybody's. And then, and then it went into, now we're gonna provide childcare for people that aren't even employed anywhere, and it, it kind of sidetracked. So I guess I'm saying, I, I kind of wanna see the answer to the original question, which was to cover the employees.
Right.
Because we've never got an answer to that in three years. So that's the answer I'm looking for. And if there's a separate community-based childcare that's a potential, then I'm.
Interested as well, yeah.
Have we done, have we done a survey to find out how many people and how many children the county currently needs?
I used to, yes, I used to have that on a sticky note right here in the old building, and it moved over here, and then I moved it. And it, it broke it down to how many of each age. Uh, so HR has that because it's a survey that I had sent out a year ago. So, and so she could use those numbers. Now, I, I have to look at those numbers that people are like, would you use childcare if it's available? Well, sure. Pay full price for it? Uh, no, grandma would do it. So I don't think those numbers are true and a hundred percent accurate. But if you do a survey that she comes back and says, okay, the costs are gonna need to be blah, blah, blah per hour, then you can send a survey saying, would you be willing to pay blah, blah, blah per hour? And you're gonna come back with a, a more true number. Uh, but same idea, you don't necessarily, if you're limited on space and limited on teachers, you don't have to have one teacher per three infants. You're gonna have one teacher per thirteen toddlers, cover far more employees, understand you're missing a segment of society. But if that's all.
But it's still gotta pencil.
Feel better than what you have.
So I, it's, I, I, like I said, I like all the information before I, um, you know, tell somebody, sorry, that can't happen.
So we're gonna schedule for an afternoon here in a couple of weeks. How's that sound?
I'll drop your button.
Yeah. Sounds good to you guys?
Yep.
All right.
Perfect.
Do we want to schedule something to talk about or, uh, even have directors present to talk about a little roundtable discussion about work from home and four-day work week? Or is that something we just wanna make a policy allowing and let them deal with it on their own?
So we do allow four-day work weeks. Um, they have to go in front of the board as an alternative work schedule. I know Richard's done it. Um, uh, other people have done it in different departments. I would say if we want to, let's put it on the agenda for discussion. And again, you know, it's only for, for our department heads, we can't.
Right.
Yeah. If, yeah. But then I think the other, the other, um, elected officials, I mean, we all still work for the same county. So we want them there because other officials, they might feel like they're gonna lose staff if we're allowing four days and they're not going to. And, you know, they have a lot of forward-facing people that that's not an option. So I think the discussion is gonna be, is good and fruitful.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. So let's throw that on the schedule sometime, too. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to recess the board meeting for lunch, be back at one o'clock.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion in a second to recess until one o'clock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, and see you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the business agenda with one add-on. Uh, under one thirty, under new business requests from Economic Development Director Dave McClure and, uh, nine-one-one, Chief of Operations Filberto Ontiveros for a six-month extension to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, to be allowed to use vacation hours carried over from twenty twenty-one.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the business agenda with one add-on. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, have you guys had a chance to go over the minutes that were all sent out?
No.
Okay, we will wait on that. Next, we're going to move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. We will be going back to, uh, the older, old style of doing this where, um, uh, you will have your three minutes to ask any questions. The commissioners will reserve the last five minutes to respond to any questions or comments. Uh, with that, we will start in the room. Is there anybody who would like to provide public comment? Okay, we will go online, public comment. Seven two one one.
Greg Wagner with seats. Mr. Sauter, last week you told me, when I asked you, who will pay for the road improvements to Oak Ridge Road for the under-canvas project? You told me it was in their conditions of approval. I obtained, obtained a copy of the conditions of approval and can't find any language in there stating that Under Canvas will pay for all improvements to Oak Ridge Road as they stated during their hearing. Without this, in the conditions of approval, the citizens will pay for under-canvas Oak Ridge Road improvements. Why wasn't a condition put in place to protect the, the citizens of this county? If there is no language in there saying Under Canvas pays for the road, the citizens will pay for it in two thousand and twenty-six. As leaders of the county, I don't know why you didn't do that to make sure that there was language in the conditions of approval to make sure Under Canvas pays for all the improvements. Will all the conditions for approval of the under-canvas project be met prior to permitting? Mochi permitted the Lund Hill solar site fifteen months prior to all the conditions of approval were met. Will this misconduct continue for future projects? You are Mochi's boss and should make sure she follows the county policies. I'd also like to know, Mr. Sauter, several weeks ago, I asked you, what happened to the three hundred thousand dollars of mitigation money that Avengrid gave you for the damages done by the solar site Lund Hill? That Avengrid gave you for the damages done by the solar site Lund Hill? And I've never received a reply. I'd like to get an answer. Mr. Christopher, you said on the last K L C K radio interview that the county will now start billing the landowners who lease their land to solar for the amount that they receive each year on each acre ground. And I have to ask, how will you come up with that amount of money considering the leasing landowners sign a non disclosure statement with the solar company that they cannot tell you any information? So please tell me, how are you going to know how much to bill them? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Next up, anybody else online who would like to provide public comment? Star six to unmute yourself. You can turn your video camera on. You can raise your hand, get our attention. I am not seeing anyone. Anyone else in the room? Okay. Well, we've got some things to look at. If you would like to provide public comment, it will be available until 1:25. We are still in citizen comment. If anybody would like to provide comment. Everybody's enjoying the sun, it looks like.
By the way, did I not get the memo that it was blue shirt day or did I just miss out on the luck factor of blue shirt day?
You have a blue shirt? Yeah.
Not usually my color of choice, but I have a couple.
Wait on these. We don't have as many people as usual.
Did you get that fire out in Centerville, Joe? How many acres total? Across from the chicken processor, you might say, the the old chicken processor down there. Let's call it the first house north of the trail.
Oh, Tracy.
Hello, commissioners, and thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to know if you folks have read that the the bill that Blumenthal is putting through Congress right now, the Mount Hood and Columbia River Gorge Recreational Enhancement and Conservation Act? And your opinions on it? And I also kind of wanted to know, since you're all residents of Clickedat County, what your take is on the future for Clickedat County, if you're leaning more toward the recreational, more recreational and things like that? Or if you're leaning more toward the business aspects of Clickedat County? Or anyway, just just kind of wanted to get your take on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Star six, unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on, jump up and down, get our attention. Commissioner Sauter, would you like to respond to any of the questions?
Yeah, actually, my first would be a follow up with Tracy. I think you're still on. Could you give me more the Blumenthal's bill? What was the title of it again? I because I am not familiar with it. I was gonna look it up. Oh, you found it. Blument- Mount Hood and Columbia River Gorge Recreation Enhancement and Conservation Act. Okay, no, I'm not familiar with it. I I will, I will read it or look at it and I so I can't really comment on that. Mr. Wagner, Oak Ridge Road, and again, you, the conditions of approval, and I'm I'm not, I know they've been provided to you. In fact, you forwarded back the conditions that we had given to you per a public records request. So I'm a little confused because it's condition of approval that have to do with the road construction. Condition number 14, a commercial road approach permit and construction is required at the entrance to the proposed project. Condition 15, the site shall have a minimum of 125 parking spaces. No parking whatsoever shall be allowed on Oak Ridge Road. Condition 16, the applicant shall follow recommendations from Clickedat County Public Works to provide adequate provisions for access to the site to the extent required by Clickedat County Public Works. Roads serving the project, including Oak Ridge Road, which is the one that keeps being brought up, shall meet Ashto or Washington State Department of Transportation Washot standards for fire trucks. So if there's any improvements that have to be made to the road, this is condition of approval. Condition 17, to the extent required by Clickedat County Public Works, all roads that access the facility, including Oak Ridge Road, shall meet Clickedat County Title 12 standards, which will include fire access roads. Well, they have to be in a 60 foot easement. They have to have running width of at least 20 feet, you know, with the base and all that. So any improvements that are required to the road from the project is a condition of approval. The project will have to pay for those. They'll have to do the work or have the work done to our standards. So is there a condition that said under canvas will pay for all costs associated with Oak Ridge Road from now until whenever? No, there is not a condition that says that. There's never a condition that says that, but it is standard language of approval is if your project is creating there has to be an improvement that has to be made to the public road that is a direct result from your project, the project pays for those costs. That's what these conditions say to me. And again, we didn't put these conditions when the the Mr. Wagner made the statement about why didn't you include? This was the hearings examiner, which I support. The things are in there that I would have put there myself, but we have no ability. I didn't write these. The hearings examiner wrote these, which then were appealed and Superior Court upheld these as well. So it seems very clear to me that improvements that are necessary on Oak Ridge Road for the project will be borne entirely by the project. Does that mean that improvements to Oak Ridge Road at some point in the future that are on the six year road plan? Those are whether the project is built or not would and will happen or maybe not, but it's not related to the project.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Star six, unmute your phone, turn your camera on, raise your hand. Anybody in the room? Welcome to come forward. Come forward, please.
To the mics.
To the mics so people online can hear you. Is the mic green?
Yep.
Okay.
So I just wanted to kind of put it out there for public consumption that what I got from you guys is not something that I deserved. And I am still trying to get it all figured out. I deserved better. What I did for this county mattered. And what you guys did was effectively make everything that I did pretty much disappear. And I just wanted to put it on public record that I do matter. My life matters and the way that you guys treated me mattered. So moving forward, I'm going to be a little bit more vocal. The fact of the matter is, is that I gain a lot more information from just watching you guys than I do from actually talking or listening to you guys talk. And the information that I have gotten over the last couple of months has been not only disturbing, but hurtful. So now that you no longer have a planner, you know, it's like all of those programs that were even there before I came along are gone. And so I'm looking at you and I'm looking at myself and I'm thinking, what the hell did I do? That deserved such a swift fricking reaction. And honestly, I can't come up with anything that I have done, whether I feel like it could have played a part or not. I did not deserve that. And I am just going to make a stand right now, right here, that I mattered and all of the friendships that I created while I was here mattered. And the fact that you guys just made it disappear is extremely hurtful. So moving forward, like I said, you'll be hearing a little bit more from me. I am going to continue asking for public records as they take me down the specific lines of inquiry that they have. And I'm going to get it all sorted out at some point. So I do want to thank Commissioner Sauter for all of the things that he showed me along the way. I still hold you in very high regard. And and I'm sorry to see that you're going because even though you're a part of that, I still hold you in very high regard. And I'm just not, I'm just not feeling that with the rest of the board. I mean, you guys individually have some things about you that are just spot on and right on, but you guys as a group, you suck. So I just hope that you guys are able to figure out how to turn things around and make things really work for this county. Because this county deserves it. It's a beautiful, beautiful place and it deserves a little bit better of leadership than what it's getting.
Thank you, Ms. Irving. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Online or in the room? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, last chance. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? I'm not seeing anyone. Commissioner Christopher, is there anyone you would like to respond to?
Oh, I'll take a stab. So I guess I'll go with the second half of Mr. Wagner's accusation. That I said landowners will be billed. I think he needs to go back and listen to the recording. Those were not my words. I don't get to say they will be. I am not the county assessor. That is up to the county assessor how they will be taxed. Right now, they are currently taxed based off an income method, off how much they produce off that acreage. How the assessor gets that information is when we turn in our ag deferral program, we have to give them Schedule F from our taxes would show income off that property. So I would assume unless any landowner wants to lie to the federal government and defraud the federal government out of the lease payments they're getting, that information will be readily accessible on a Schedule F if the elected assessor so chooses to tax them based off an income method. So I would just say if you're going to quote me, you might want to try to actually use my words instead of the words you're putting into my mouth. Other than that, I will let it go.
Okay, I would say as well to Mr. Wagner, when you. I would say as well to Mr. Wagner, when you say citizens will pay for it in 2026, I'm assuming you're talking about the six-year road plan. And what you're talking about is on the six-year road plan is, is the reconstruction of the north, north end of Oak Ridge Road. That was not something that currently has funding. That's why it's out there on the six-year road plan. It's not something that it's likely going to continue to get pushed on the six-year road plan. But when you do a full rework of that road and pave it like we did to the first south half years ago, that is borne by all of the residents as well as any grant funds we can get from the state. That is not something that you would require of a landowner or a business. But with regards to everything else, I think Commissioner Soder pointed out very clearly that those requirements are in the conditions. With regards to the Columbia River Gorge Recreation Enhancement Act, Tracy, as all bills it seemed that go through Congress, there's some things in there I like. There's some things in there that, that kind of scare me. But I think that bill, I think it's kind of one-sided personally, and they could have done a lot more work bringing in the business leaders in the area to ask some of those questions with regards to the enhancement. I haven't, I know that the increase in the wilderness area is on the Oregon side, so that's not something we really have a, a big statement on. But a lot of that Recreation Act is based on the increase in recreation that's happening in, in the Columbia River Gorge and around the Mount Hood National Monument or Wilderness Area. And that some of those funds, like for search and rescue, things that are affecting Clickatuck County as well as Skamania County, there are some good things in there to increase funds for search and rescue. Your question on what is our take in terms of recreation? Recreation is continuing to grow in the Columbia River Gorge. It will continue to grow. It is a business, so I'm, I don't see it as choosing recreation over business or business over recreation. I think recreation is a business and many businesses cater to that recreation. I think there's going to continue to be growing pains with regards to how many people come to the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area and the permit system that's being put in place, you know, for driving along the waterfall alley is probably going to continue as more and more people come here. Yes, you can love a place to death. And with regards to Ms. Irving, as much as I would love to talk and comment, things of a personnel nature are not something that we discuss in public and it's not something that we ever should discuss in public. With that, we have enough time for one last citizen comment. If there's anybody who would like to provide public comment, who has not had a chance I am not seeing anyone. Oh. Tracy?
May I say one more, one more thing? So the road crew didn't mention the, there is a very large pothole on Highway 14 going east from Binge and it's marked with a pink circle now, but if, if you have oncoming traffic, it's very hard to avoid. And I'm hoping that the highway crew can just hit that sometime soon because with the summer traffic, somebody's going to get in a wreck there just hitting that pothole.
Thank you, Tracy. I believe that's on state route and so that would be Washdot, but I'm sure they're well aware of it. But we will talk to our public works to let Washdot know about it as well. Thank you very much.
Tracy, I'm, I'm aware of the pothole.
Yes. Hard to miss.
Yeah, well, and it's, she's right as far as if there's on, there's, it's right where the bluff is right there. And so if there's, if there's traffic, there's no place to go, so you have to stay in your lane.
Do you think it was a rock that fell?
I, I, it's a, it's a pretty good hole and they, they do have an orange, I mean, so somebody knows it's there. I don't know if the paint is so that drivers know it's there, but after you've been that way more than once, you remember that hole.
It is now 1:30. We are going to close public comment. And I would like to say thank you to everyone for your public comments. We are here to listen and we do take everything you say seriously and do our research, including reading more on the Recreation Enhancement Act. Okay, moving on, we are going to move on to new business and that's a request from the Natural Resources Economic Development Director Dave McClure and 911 E-911 Chief of Operations Philberto, Philberto Ontiveris for a six-month extension to December 31st, 2022, to be allowed to use vacation hours carried over from 2021. McClure has 42 hours and Ontiveris has 51 hours. Jeff, is there anything you'd like to say since you're here? I'm guessing this is what you're here for.
I am, and no, just to answer your questions, if you have any about my memo.
Okay. Discussion?
I guess I would say that while I'm not a big fan of holding over vacation time, I think the employee should use it. I do understand extenuating circumstances. As my understanding, Mr. McClure is well down from what he carried over last year. So he is using his vacation and trying to use it up. And Philberto, with all of the overtime down there that's been put in place, I think that's why you're finding this carryover there. So I have no problem with either one of them.
Yeah, I'd support it. Again, we want, we want them to use it. I think there's circumstances, especially emergency management, although I will say Director McClure is, I think, making improvements. He is a habitual, and I, and I say this in a most positive way. You know, that he, it's, you have to pry him out of his office sometimes to go use his vacation hours. And so I think he's been getting the message and so he is, he is whittling down that carryover. And I think emergency management, it's just, I'm amazed anybody can use anything, frankly, that it's not worse than it is just because of the staffing issues there. So yeah, I'm, I'm supportive.
And I would say that I've, I am of course supportive and I'd like to thank Philberto for putting in all the extra time that he is doing and the training that's going to be coming up. I know it's going to be a heavy lift and I know this is the least we can do to ensure that, you know, he gets to keep what, what he's earned. And with Mr. McClure, I know he volunteers and gives away a lot of those hours every year and that's to be commended as well. I would entertain a motion.
I got three things open at the same time. I'll just do it from old blue. How's that? Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the requests from Director McClure and Chief of Operations Philberto Ontiveris for a six-month extension of their vacation hours. Allow those to be carried over until December 31st, 2022. That is 42 hours for Director McClure and 51 hours for Philberto. My motion is to approve the requests, both requests.
I would second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the requests. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Director McClure?
Good afternoon, sir.
We're back before, before you today to ask for verbal authority to do what we ask. We discussed with you briefly last Tuesday and let me recap what that was. So we are approved for four FTEs in the IT department, two system administrators, a help desk, one or two, that's one box, and the IT manager. Having difficulty recruiting for the, to replace the systems administrator, systems administrator that we lost. And, but we have got some interest in people that we think would qualify for the help desk. And so our approach would be to ask you for verbal permission or authority to reorgan, to redo our org chart, adding a system, a help desk, one or two, to the system administrator box, ultimately giving us ability to bring somebody in at a lower level and progress them to a system administrator. As you've heard before from other departments, kind of grow our own now since we can't find somebody at that level. But we can find folks at the help desk level. So no increase in FTE. And the progression of pay, because I think Commissioner Christopher asked this, the help desk one is a grade 38, help desk two is a grade 39, and the systems administrators are a grade 43. So it does provide a nice progression within that box to give us the option of bringing someone in as, at any one of those three levels. And so we would ask, did you have any other comments or?
No, that pretty much sums it up.
Is there a way to transition a help desk two at, at grade 39? Are they going to move up to when they're ready? Are they going to move to the 43 or is there a way to transition?
No, I, the, the 43 is, was just recently increased in the study we just did. I think that's, according to the data, that's a fair pay for that position. And so I, I think if they get to that help desk two, grade 39, and they're proficient and can assume the duties of the systems administrator, they should go to historically what they pay as. We wouldn't move them unless they were proficient and ready to go to that level.
If I'm, yeah, because just to follow up on that, it's going to be my question. I'm assuming there is objective criteria to, as far as that, that would be my concern is that if I'm, when it's time to move, when somebody, and I'm seeing this from both sides really, is that we're not having them do the higher level of work while we keep them and vice versa, that we're not, it's like, oh, they put some time in and so we're going to move. The next step is that from 39 to 43. And so I'll, I mean, other than what's in the job descriptions, I guess, as far as this is the skills you have to be proficient at to be that.
We don't have any defined criteria. We could come up with something like certification or something along those lines.
We did that recently and Jeff and I haven't talked about this, that's why we're looking at each other.
I was noticing that.
Recently, in the Public Works Department, as part of negotiations, Public Works Department created a list of criteria to get employees from this pay grade to this pay grade and the union just approved that. So I think the same concept could hold true. It's, there was a knowledge, certain levels of knowledge and proficiency that we want to see and include certifications and time on the job and being able to fix a boiler or, you know, do certain things. And I think we could develop that for that step between the help desk two and the assistant administrator.
I'd just like to have something that's down and objective. And again, I'm looking at it from both perspectives. Because if I'm the employee, because sometimes, you know, people are working well beyond their job description and frankly, their compensation because they're not, they, you know, we don't have a way to say, oh, you're, you really qualify for this now if we don't know what that is. And vice versa, that we don't, that there's not an expectation on the employee that, oh, well, I, you know, hey, boss, I, I want a promotion. And it's like, if you're not, if you can't meet the criteria, you're, you're not ready yet for that. That's out there.
Well, being HR in this seat, we would never recommend that somebody bring someone in who does not meet the minimum requirements for a lot of reasons. One of which is you potentially set the employee up for failure. You're bringing them in at a job they can't do and that's not fair either. So, so we will definitely develop that and share it with you at a future meeting. If you'd rather we wait until we do that or?
I'm, I'm totally comfortable. I'm not worried.
One other question I had is if you're moving it from a, I'm assuming you're not going to promote from help desk one, it's going to go from the help desk two up. So you're really moving from a 39 to a 43. If you have a help desk two, step five, are they going to start at a 43, step one?
More than likely. What we try and do is, we've discussed this in the past a little bit, is when we move an employee up, they, we try and never have them make less money. They might be at a less step, but they make, never make less money. So I don't.
I don't have the chart in front of me. You're out of luck to see what the pay.
So a 40, a 39.
Christopher had it memorized.
A 39, let's say step five is 53, 685 annual and a 43, step one is 60. So it's still, so it's a significant four grades.
You can back up five steps and still get seven grand more. That was my question. Are we going to bump them to a five up there?
Historically, we wouldn't probably do that unless they've been here five years. I know that was the issue before, somebody had been here five years and were we going to make them go back and start over? But if someone, I would say probably not, but everything's up for discussion. Because there is a significant raise in there already to go to step one and a lot more room to grow.
And usually when we let them keep their step, it's when you're transferring from one, one position to another that's in that same.
Yeah. And there's no benefit. Yeah, then there's like, you're not really gaining, it's not much of a promotion and there's no place to go.
Right.
But going from a 39 to a 43. And again, if they're proficient at the 43, which they would have to be to get there, then that's a significant pay bump and.
Yeah. I'm fine with it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. We have a two o'clock. Do we know if anybody from Dallas Park was going to be online? I don't think so. Okay. Next up, we're going to move into a resolution in the matter of officially securing Clickatuck County-owned property in the community of Dallas Park to be a community. Discussion?
I don't really have a lot of discussion in it. I'm, I'm in favor of it, so.
Yeah, I can support the resolution because it's basically saying what exists now. I don't think we're committing to anything more as far as county resources than we're already. It's, I mean, it, when the plat was dedicated, the land was set aside as a park, given to the county back whenever it was in 46 or 48, whenever it was.
Which is a little surprising given in some of the language in the, in the plat. That's, that's for another discussion someday that I would have thought that was from the, like, late 1800s, but I was surprised it was as modern as it was, but that's a different topic. Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with this. This does not commit the county to funding anything, building anything at this time. We're certainly, that's something as we discussed this morning with, I'm, I'm hoping we can submit a, for a planning grant because I think that's what the community needs to do as far as if it's a new program and RCO is willing to fund. So they, the planning grant towards that to get an idea of what could or should be constructed there. I think that's a good place to start. I don't see that this commits us to, like, we're, we have to write checks now. It's just that we're, it's, we're just acknowledging the set aside as a county park. It is, we're just saying, yep, that's what it is. So I'm, I'm okay with it.
I think it's just more goodwill and peace of mind to the citizens that, you know, we're going to follow through with what is essentially said in 1946?
Parts of it. Anybody listening, go look.
Anybody listening, go look up that old plat. It's got some interesting language in it about who can and can't live there. Yeah.
Oh.
As I said, it's, I was surprised that it's, it was as modern as it was. Because it's like, yeah. Let's just say it wouldn't pass muster today.
Who can and can't play on the playground equipment?
Yeah. Yeah.
I would entertain a motion if you wouldn't.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. We have before us a resolution in the matter of officially securing Clickatuck County-owned property in the community of Dallasport to be a community park. My motion would be to approve the resolution.
And for clarification, you're talking about the land on Sixth and D Street, correct?
Yes, thank you.
I would second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the resolution, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Before we move on to the consent agenda, a very, very discussion about this also pertains to Dallasport, of the community meeting that you guys, before, you see, we guys talked about last week. A discussion.
What was the date that we ended up with?
Sixteenth of August, which is very.
Okay. I did have a question. I had a, which, it's up to us. It's our meeting. It would be, this would be a public meeting to discuss the wastewater and kind of really the first step of breaking the news, I think, to the community about the, showing the rates, the rate study, the stuff, and it's like, this is unsustainable. The PUD asked, did we want them there, meaning the manager, the operator, and the, one of the PUD commissioners in the room or not? It's our meeting, but they would come for like technical, if people had some technical questions, and I said I'd get back to them. It may, I mean, from, it might draw fire, it might not. It's always nice to me to have the people that actually operate something to be able to answer the question, not me like, well, I think this is what they do, but I don't know.
So, for me, it's kind of like I was stating earlier that I think to make a decision, you have to have an informed decision. And for the public to get an informed decision, they need to actually hear questions from PUD. So, I agree that it shouldn't be a joint meeting.
Right.
But on hand to ask, answer technical questions that may come up that we don't know, I think would be a good benefit.
Okay. So, if we're okay, then maybe we can reach out to the PUD and say, okay.
Okay.
Questions also from staff for the clarification. It will not be Zoomed. I have no idea about the internet down there.
Yeah, there is many.
We don't necessarily have to record it. I can take our little boardroom unit. I'm still researching whether we have access to a PA. So, trying to get some, somehow they need to have a PA system to figure that out.
Do we usually?
I thought we.
Meetings down there?
We've had them there before, and we've just not used a PA or anything.
Just talk loud.
Just talk loud and.
It's not that big of a room.
No.
I think we'll be fine with that one. Or maybe, you know, reserve the front two rows for people that are hearing impaired or something.
Yeah.
That might help.
Well, as it is a board, I was hoping someone would come and take. Because otherwise, it would be the third chair has to do it, and I don't want to do it.
Okay. Sounds good.
I don't know if you could make me do it. There were some folks there.
We talked about stuff.
We talked about stuff.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda with six items.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with all six items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Pay estimates?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay pay estimate number twenty-five to Kirby-Negelhaus Construction Company in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-three cents, which excludes retainage in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and five cents, and includes sales tax in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents for the total payment amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and thirteen cents for the county services building contract number C zero-three, one-two-zero.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to pay estimate number twenty-five to Kirby-Negelhaus Construction Company. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay pay estimate number one to All Seasons Heating and Air Conditioning Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, sixty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents, which excludes retainage in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and two cents, and includes sales tax in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents for a total payment amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents for the courthouse HVAC system replacement of two thousand and twenty-one.
I will second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to pay pay estimate number one to All Seasons Heating and Air Conditioning. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Might need to reach out to Greg because we're way early.
Okay. Do you, either of you, oh, we got one more.
Overall. Okay, we have the two again. One is payroll only, one is payroll and AP. So, to me, if I, we do the combined one, that should be, because it covers both. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve accounts. No, they are two separate. No? That's payable, okay. This is payroll only, this, okay, it's in two certifications, so we'll do them separately. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents for the date ending June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve payroll benefit warrants in the amount of one million, fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-six cents for the date ending June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
I would second that motion.
Been a motion and a second to pay those bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You said the reason that is is because they do them, they're here at two different times.
At least we're not paying them twice.
No, I mean, it's fine. It's, what's a, one sheet of paper, doesn't. Yeah, I just didn't want to pay one thing twice and one thing once. So, one thing I did, I need to check to, one thing Mr. Wagner did say about the three hundred thousand in mitigation dollars. I do, we do need to follow up on that. As far as I know, I think it's just sitting in the account. We haven't designated.
Yeah, we have not said where it's going.
But it's going to, but I want to confirm that.
There's been discussions preliminary with Central and Eastern Conservation Districts, but nothing has been decided.
Is, I guess I'd say with that, were those dollars earmarked to be used for a specific purpose? Or how does that, how did that all play out? What is it? More information would be good for me.
It is, and I'm.
Habitat mitigation.
Yeah, from Lund Hill. So, they wrote a check for three hundred thousand dollars.
But is there a stipulation that it has to be used to help fuzzy squirrel habitat? Or improve oak habitat? Or used on a water project? Or is it up to board discretion on what it's used for?
As far as I know, it's pretty open-ended for habitat mitigation. You know, the State Department of Fish and Wildlife has, you know, goals for their mitigation, you know. In place, in time is the preferred. And then, as you go down from there, then it's same type of land that you're mitigating in a different place. And then, you know, it just rolls through all these different mitigation strategies.
Yeah. But ultimately, we'll have the discretion as far as, yeah, as Chair said, the best, you know, is, you know, in place, in kind is the best. If I'm impacting this kind of habitat, then I want to replace it in as close as I can to the proximity with the same kind of land.
Not buying timberland in Trail Lake.
Exactly. And then, but quite often, there's no, there's no practical way to do that. And so, then it gets further away, or it's different kind, or.
Can buy traditional root gathering area.
So, I think, could be. I think it's pretty open-ended. Yeah, but the three hundred thousand is just sitting in the account as far as.
And so, there's mitigation, like, there's purchasing property so that it'll never get developed. Like, some of the wind turbine stuff was about that, purchasing development rights. You can also do mitigation by habitat enhancement. So, you can, you can take other ground that was sage grouse.
Make it better.
And make it better. That's another way of providing mitigation.
And we'll have this discussion when we, I guess I'd say when we go to spend those dollars, that will be us having the discussion. Or will that be somebody else having the discussion and coming back to us with an ask?
Likely somebody, if you want, I mean, my advice is if you want to have the discussion as far as where you want to be thinking about and doing, I would be one of those. Because if you're not, it will be, there are, there's lots of other people out talking about how to spend that money on something, they're going to come with a proposal. If you want to make, say, oh, I think this is what we should use it for, then I would encourage you to be thinking about that now. Especially, it's in your district, it's in your, it's out in East County if there's something. I've always been an advocate, because I hate it when mitigation gets turned into, it has no connection with what the impact is.
You take landfill money and buy land in Skamane County.
Exactly. That to me is, you know, when, when Friends of the Gorge took, which they wouldn't, you know, they would never call it mitigation money for the BPA transmission line, the new one, that they got, you know, two point three million dollars, or I think that's what it was. And then, it, they ended up using it to buy property, you know, down in the gorge. It's like, there's no connection from the impact. The mitigation is supposed to make the impact better, less severe. And it's supposed to, in that area, you can't go fifty miles away. And I can't stand, because that is, all that at all is, when that happens, that sounds more like, I'm going to write you a check, and you're going to let me do what I want to do. And it's, I'm not actually mitigating anything. And I have a word for what we call that, and I'm not going to say it out loud. But sometimes, it's not practical. Sometimes, there is no, I mean, so it's, sometimes you can't, and so, you do the best you can. And it could be that the mitigation is something, you know, maybe it's something up in the Simcoe's, maybe it's something, but if you're thinking about something, I would encourage you to be, because there's other people thinking about it right now.
No, I will be in favor of darn near anything as long as it's in that neck of the woods. If you're trying to use that mitigation money over here, even where we're sitting today, I would be opposed to it.
So. Well, I would say have an open mind, because sometimes the net positive does make it. Like, I've seen us use, or I've seen agencies use mitigation where it was out of kind, it was out of time, it was. But in the overall scheme of things, it probably was a net benefit. And it was like, okay, I can get behind that. But as a general rule, no, I don't, I like it to be.
That's all I'm going for there.
Okay. Good conversation. Board pending.
And since Mr. Brochlor did come running down the hall, I don't, we didn't say anything to.
Buy a truckload of squirrels.
Yeah.
It wasn't oak habitat that they.
Yeah, not out there.
I do remember, though, talking about that, you know, back in the days of the wind turbines, there was mitigation that went all the way from the east end to the west end of the county to be used on wetland mitigation or snowden. And I was like, where's the connection?
Right, that was the one I was referencing. I did not, they used some from way out east, Bickleton, to do sandhill crane improvements on the west end of the county. It's like, they didn't have anything to do with, that's nothing but, oh.
I would fight the same thing if it was mitigation money from something in, you know, Glenwood, and they wanted to use it in Bickleton, I would be fighting the same way. You need to use it as close to Glenwood as possible.
It's like the commission, the BPA stuff, we actually submitted, because the PUD submitted.
You're talking the BPA line that goes through the Knight Road substation, right?
The Big Eddie project. Yes, yes, I am.
Oh, they got mitigation money for that?
Yeah, they did, yeah, Friends of the Gorge.
Friends of the Gorge got like two point three million?
They did.
For that, oh, interesting.
Yeah, and so, our, we encouraged our PUD to, because it wasn't, it could be for anything. And so, they actually applied to have some, because it was in the scenic area, even though the area that they were, the crossing was outside of, it wasn't even in the scenic area, which we never quite understood that. But the PUD applied to use, applied for some of that money from Friends of the Gorge to underground some overhead power lines, so they would be less scenically impacting in the area that there was a lot of, you know, trees knocked them down, storm damage, it made sense. And so, they said, oh, well, this, what a perfect thing to use mitigation for scenic impacts of transmission lines for. And Friends said no, and then they used the money to buy some land down in Washougal or somewhere. So, that's the example of, yeah, you don't take the impact from Central Clickatuck County, and then the mitigation for it is in Clark County. No. That's just not, not okay. It's daves@clickatuckcounty.org.
And C. I'll think of that one.
I thought the Big Eddie crossing was within the gorge scenic area.
Where it was, but the mitig, they, the part that kind of made it is that their impact was they calculated the number of miles, and it was.
Probably were calculating all the miles.
Right. And it was like this one little teeny piece. That where it crossed there at Wishram was in the scenic area.
There was a really nice folder about this big in my office when I got my office. It had some really good information.
Yeah.
I decided to shred it.
Yeah. Well, the, well, BPA absolutely would not call it mitigation, because then they, then there's, because there's kind of criteria around that. And so, it was just.
What did they call it?
They called it, so Friends of the Gorge didn't even sue. They just threatened to sue. And so, they actually wrote a check before there was any litigation or anything. It was a settlement. It was not mitigation. It was a settlement. It was settlement in lieu of litigation is what they called it.
Woo.
So, there's a model there.
There's another word for that, too.
Yeah, I, that's, we're not saying that word. Yeah.
Moving on.
Yes.
Before you two get.
Yes, there is. If you give me money so that I don't do something.
I will gavel you down, sir.
Thank you.
For your own good.
Yes, for my own good.
For your own good, yep, yep, yep.
All right. Board pending. Anything else, gentlemen, that you have for the good of the order?
Just what I raised this morning.
Minion?
Yeah, I'm pointing it at myself.
Anything else for the good of the order, Commissioner Satter?
I do like the free spirit day that's come about in the last six months.
Yeah, it's my blue shirt day.
I missed out on it again. I didn't get the memo.
No?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Do we have the prosecuting attorney online? We are moving way ahead today. I don't see. I don't see him. Lee, would you like to try to get and call the prosecuting attorney and see if he has anything for us?
I sent an email to Rebecca, and I'm able to call the prosecutors.
Okay. I think we've got more stuffs to sign.
She's online, she might want to give a finance committee update.
Oh. Brenda, are you there?
Do you think she's going to do Greg's?
Auditor Sorensen, are you there? I missed the finance committee meeting, so. All right, I'll see you.
Talk about finance stuff and make somebody's ear bleed. Come in, nobody shows up for your citizen comment, by the way. Like, two people and nothing.
Because everybody likes the way I conduct it.
Yeah, that's it.
People being entertained in a different way today.
Sunshine out.
That went out.
With the voicemail.
Okay, well. Do we have anything else for the good of the order?
Are we not waiting on Greg? Is that what the decision was?
He is on vacation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Then I guess not, too.
All right, Mr. Chair, then, being no other business, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. We have no workshops scheduled this week.
I would second that motion.
There's been a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
That might set a record.